It is just 4:00 PM and welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session, March 21st, 2023. And our first item is going to be the Quarterly American Rescue Plan Act Update.
Right on time.
Good evening. Cassandra Grip, Grant Specialist with the Neighborhood and Development Services Department. All right. The U.S. Treasury has allocated $18.3 million in ARPA funds to the City of Iowa City, as you know. To date, approximately 14.02 million of these funds has been allocated, including the pending items for council vote. All emergent needs that have been identified and prioritized by council have been addressed, with direct payments to eligible adults and housing relocation needs being expended in full. Those programs are now complete. The eviction prevention and emergency nonprofit assistance programs, they are currently in progress. Their first quarterly report is due April 10th, so I do expect that next update I will have a more detailed progress report for you. Statements of interest for the BIPOC Business Support Funds are currently being accepted and are due May 1st. Statements of interest for the Social Services Capital Funding Funds have been reviewed, and we anticipate those preliminary recommendations, yes, they will be presented at today's council meeting. Affordable Housing Initiative Funds, those are anticipated to be discussed in the coming months to help us inform those next steps. Mobile Crisis Funds that were allocated pretty early on, or they continue to be expended. Progress reports are as expected. That is the same for the tourism funding as well. Those continue to be expended, and progress reports are going well as well. Workforce Development Programs, those are, two of those are currently in progress. The University of Iowa Labor Center Program, as well as the ForSEES Child Care Workforce Development Program. Again, those are also, their first quarter of the report is due April 10th, so I should have some, some pretty good details next, next quarter. And then there is a Child Care Wage Supplement Program Proposal, and I believe that's anticipated to be reviewed pretty soon. The final category, Climate Resilience Funds, it sounds like those will be discussed here in a little bit, so I will, I will leave that, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council discussion.
I did have a question about just how we're pushing out some information, so it was really wonderful that Megan and I got to sit on the council committee for the capital grants for nonprofits, and that's kind of informed my thinking about how, you know, this next program, which I think was modeled kind of in the same way, I had had for the underestimated communities support grants that we were formerly calling the BIPOC Business Support. So I had been in contact with a variety of folks over the last couple of years about that opportunity as it framed up, and we talked at work session and council about what that program might be and when it might be available. And then when the information came out last week, I pushed that to people who'd been in touch with me about it. And a couple of those people let me know that, that the only way that they'd heard about it had been from me, and so I just want to make sure that we have some kind of list or, you know, some way of like reaching out to people that we know we've been in touch with about, about the program. One recommendation that one of these individuals gave to me was to maybe have a, like the COVID relief BIPOC Business Support Grants, that we had a number of applications for those, and even if they didn't get funded, maybe we could reach out to everyone who applied for that or something. I think we also have lists of like, I know you don't have to be a targeted small business for this, but maybe, you know, regionally, if we can sort those and make sure people know about it. So just making sure that it's reaching as many folks as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We'll, we'll make sure and review how we push that out and that it's getting in the hands of the people we think would be interested. I will mention that we do have an open house for the public on April 6th. We're doing two on the 6th, one at noon and one at 6:00 PM. And it's an opportunity for, for folks to come ask questions. If you do get questions, one thing to keep in mind is that for those small businesses that are looking for just a little bit of support, maybe a small grant for a sign or for technical assistance, this probably isn't the program. This is probably one step removed from that, so we're looking for partners that are going to create systems or frameworks to support those businesses, whether that's a capital, like a space in which people can do pop-up retail, or a commercial kitchen space, or on the flip side, an entity that's going to manage a grant program that may provide the individual grants to businesses. So just try to keep that distinction in mind. That's a tough thing to articulate, because we know a lot of that need is at that very small business level, and we'll get there. We just are, again, one step removed at this time. But to your point, we will review how we're distributing that, and certainly in the next week, ramp that up a little bit.
Here are no more comments on this item?
Just thank you to city staff. It's been, it's been kind of a pleasure to watch like the ongoing and then what we've done since the, in the year plus I've been on here, like where we were with these programs a year and two months ago, like how far we've come even in a year worked, it started before, before we joined the council, Megan and I joined the council, but, but it's been so cool to watch all of these things start to just start, like watch those dominoes start to fall over and see these things go into action, and it's been really gratifying to watch that.
I might make one suggestion on the chart when we see it before, since we're getting some completed projects, just to have a section, oh, a section just of monies already spent. All right, we'll, we'll go to the next item, number two, which is Climate Action Division Update. And welcome.
Thank you. It's a genuine pleasure to be here. I'm going to say, as I'm opening the slides, that this has just felt like a really great day to come before you and have this discussion. My day began this morning with our climate ambassador meeting among staff members where they shared what they were doing within their divisions to work with us, and independently to forward climate action in the city, and it was just a giant underline for me about the ways that many of the successes I'm going to talk to you about today are the result of having city staff who across the board are committed to moving climate action forward. And I just really want, pardon me, want to hold up my colleagues before I say anything else to say that we couldn't do it without them, and you're going to see in the report all the amazing work that's being done. So if I can put it, is everybody able to see it as is? I'm not sure how I can close the bar. All right. Well, as you know, we adopted in Iowa City a Climate Action Plan in 2018, and so this report was meant to capture a lot of the work that's been done in the period of time since then. That report includes our ambitious goals of reducing our emissions 45% by 2030 and achieving net zero emissions by 2050. Some of you may recall that in 2020, last year, we were talking about how we had achieved our 2030 goals 10 years early, which was very exciting. It turns out some of that is to be credited to the pandemic, so those emissions went up slightly when we looked at the 2021 data. But in this case, it's an instructive rise, I think, taught us some important lessons about where those gains were made, and now hopefully we can recapture them, as I often say in the community, in a way that doesn't destabilize our economy. I think we all want that. The overall trend line, though, is going down, and we expect fully that we'll recapture those 2030 goals still ahead of schedule, which is nice, and then we can really set our sights on the more difficult work ahead, which is to get to net zero by 2050. When we break out those emissions by sector, there, we begin to see some of the telling stories of where the rises were. In particular, if you look at energy use in industrial buildings, we can see as manufacturing activity ramped back up in 2021, of course, there was a rise in emissions associated with it. We also note the rise in emissions in transportation. That story's a little more nuanced, as we'll get to in some later slides, but really the big takeaway when we look at the different sectors for emissions in Iowa City, and this is a through line every year right from the beginning, buildings and energy are the largest source of emissions in Iowa City. And then what we mean by that is the energy used to power the lighting and the heating and cooling, and the electronic devices in front of all of us. The activity used to generate that energy results in the emissions associated with our building stock, and that's where the lion's share of our attention goes, because as you can see, as of the most recent inventory, it accounts for 78% of our total emissions. Now, when we break that down further and look at different sectors of the building stock, we can see that when we look at our residential emissions, they're not quite evenly divided between electricity use and fossil gas use, tilts a little more heavily toward fossil gas, and for that reason, our interventions with the residential sector focus both on energy efficiency, so reducing energy usage overall, but also moving toward electrification. And the biggest mechanism we have right now to address that is the Residential Energy Efficiency and Electrification Grant. You received a memo, I believe, last month about the insulation program that's under this. We instituted that program last year. It really ramped up significantly in November following the launch of a integrated and comprehensive marketing campaign, so that most of that $80,000 that you see was actually spent at the tail end of the year. I'm quite pleased to report, I asked our analyst right before coming up here, had we surpassed that already, and indeed we had. So our spending in January, February, and March is already past the total spending for 2022 in that program, which is really exciting for us, because, believe me, it is hard to get people excited about insulation.
Some of the other ways we reach households here in Iowa City include the energy audits that our Green Iowa Maricor team provides. One of the things that wasn't in this report, because it's an activity that's fairly recent, actually, at the beginning of this month, we brought in a specialist who works with realtors on energy efficiency to do a training for area realtors, and it was very successful. We, she told us that normally when she meets with such groups in other areas, a big class is seven to eight participants. We had 36 realtors in the room, which was fantastic. Some of the other really positive feedback we got from her, she talked about the importance of having energy audits done in households, and when we said that this was offered for free to residents in Iowa City, she could not believe it, and went on and on talking to the realtors about how in other cities, this is a service that would cost $400 to $700, and here in Iowa City, all you have to do is sign up, wait about a month, and we'll come and check out your home for you, and perform some weatherization services. The other way we reach households is through our Neighborhood Energy Blitz, which is coming up here on April 22nd. For those of you familiar with the event, it's, we go door-to-door in a targeted neighborhood delivering kits that contain energy-saving devices and information. In the afternoon, we circle back and collect used light bulbs and batteries for proper disposal. It's a very popular event, and we get great feedback on every year. It's lots of fun to participate in, and if any of you would like to hang out with some of your constituents and go door-to-door delivering these kits, we certainly welcome you as volunteers on the morning of. You can talk to me about how to get signed up. The next area that we want to look at then in terms of our building stock is the Commercial and Industrial Matching Grant Projects, which you all hopefully are already very familiar with. These, of course, are TIF-funded projects, and as you can see, the energy usage in our industrial sector is quite different from the residential sector. In the industrial sector, overwhelmingly, the energy usage is from electricity, and for that reason, these programs tend to be focused more on energy efficiency and then cleaning up that energy usage. So as you know, we funded several solar arrays for area businesses through this program. We also do things like LED retrofits and window replacements. I know that my colleague Wendy Ford is going to be speaking to you later this evening about two other projects that have come on, under that program, but that's been a really valuable resource for commercial and industrial entities here in the city, hoping to improve their energy profile. And then finally, we have our Climate Action Grant Projects, which is how we reach nonprofits and other entities in the city that maybe don't fall as easily under the TIF-funded projects. Those are grants that are awarded in the amount of up to $10,000 a year for a variety of projects, as you can see listed here. And one of the things that's been really nice over the last couple of years is as that program has matured, originally, we got a lot of applications for things like community gardens or school gardening projects, and that's great, we want to support that work, but of course, as we know, the lion's share of our work needs to focus on buildings and energy usage, and as you can see, they are now starting to receive the lion's share of those grants, which is really nice. That's a step in the right direction. When we get to transportation, I had mentioned that this is a somewhat more nuanced section of our programming. Transportation is the second-largest source of emissions here in Iowa City. It accounts for somewhere around 22% generally. As you can see, we do have some notable successes in Iowa City. Those of you who read the report will recall that Iowa City residents bike and walk at five to seven times higher than national average. Our transit usage is also similarly high, and yet overwhelmingly, the largest share of commutes in Iowa City are done by folks driving alone. So we still have work to do, even with those accolades. In particular, something that our department has been thinking about a lot is the impact of transit ridership on, from the pandemic, which we have seen a reduction in activity. We saw this in several other sectors. In transit, it hasn't quite recovered in the same way. The Climate Action Plan calls for us to double transit ridership in the city, and that was doubled as compared to 2018 numbers. As you can see, when you look at where we're at in 2022, now realistically, what we're talking about is probably tripling it from where we're at presently. And so things that will come up for your consideration, such as free fares for buses, I think are important, pardon me, considerations for how we might achieve those goals. Of course, in transit, we also have one of our biggest climate success stories, which is part of the nuance. Even though ridership is down, we have those amazing electric buses out on the street, which, as you know, are some of our best ambassadors for electric vehicles overall here in the city. Before I get into the buses, I do want to note that the buses are, we have four buses in our electric fleet, but we have approaching 16 electric vehicles overall, so there are a number of other electric vehicles already being utilized by city staff. And in fact, one of the projects I was working on today was reviewing bids that we received for the fleet transition plan we hope to put together that will chart a course to electrifying our entire fleet of vehicles. So hopefully, the next time I come before you, I'll be talking about something cool like our first electric fire truck purchase. But for the time being, we're really excited about those buses. Those of you who attended the Electric Bus Bash will know that one of my favorite things to talk about with electric buses is that electric vehicles actually were invented in Iowa. I don't think we talk about this enough. They were used as part of the NASA Space Program in the form of the lunar rovers, and now, of course, any resident in Iowa City for free, if they get on the downtown shuttle, can hop on this technology themselves. So to me, it's just an amazing story of technology that was invented in Iowa, went to the moon, and has come back to help us save the planet. When we look at our other electrification efforts in the transportation sector, here too, with electric vehicle charging, you can see the dip in the pandemic when we didn't have as many folks coming back downtown. That has rebounded robustly. We actually have stopped reporting in our newsletter on the new record set, because we just keep setting them month after month, which is really exciting. And when we show residents the map of EV infrastructure available here already in Iowa City, they're often surprised to see how many chargers actually exist. We had an EV readiness plan that we worked on collaboratively with several other cities. One of the targets identified in that plan was to get 450 charge points per million population as an important tipping point toward EV adoption. Adjusted for our population size, we actually have the equivalent of 650 charge points here in the city, which means our public charging infrastructure is very robust, and in fact, beyond what we could hopefully target for, which really feels good, because it means that we can really concentrate now on getting electric vehicle charging into the reach of renters, which is a bit of a passion project of my own. As you'll know from the report, in Iowa, we are going to have to start charging tax on public charging, and so by getting out ahead of this, we hope to make this tax not something that's disproportionately borne by renters in our city, which, as we know, are more than half of the folks who live here. We also will have an exciting announcement coming forward in near future about the first such project we'll be pursuing with the Conduo Association, so that's a really exciting development for our office, which has been working very hard on that initiative. Waste, I'm only going to touch on lightly, because as you know, we have a wonderful resource management division that does a lot of work here in the city to increase both recycling and composting activities. I'll just say that we work very closely with that division, particularly in our education and outreach efforts. And in fact, Jane Wilch and I are going to be hosting our first live speaking of event at Big Grove in October as part of our Earth Month celebrations. So these have been very popular virtual offerings. We're excited to be able to go back out into public now and engage folks directly with that issue. We're going to be talking about plastics. As I've been joking with Jane Wilch, it's good that we are doing that in a place where there will be beer within reach. It's a stressful topic. And then we'll land on adaptation, which is the last section of the Climate Action Plan. Adaptation is sometimes the most difficult part of our work to talk about, because one of the things we know is that even with the great strides we're making, even with the great strides we expect to make, there are some impacts of climate change that we are already seeing now, and that we will continue to see in the foreseeable future. These include things like high heat days and increased precipitation. We engaged in a carbon sequestration effort just a couple of years ago that resulted in some very useful maps. The one you see in front of you is a map of the Heat Island Effect here in Iowa City. The red areas correspond with areas that are between 10 to 13 degrees higher in temperature than the median temperature for that day, and the blue-green areas are areas that are seven to eight degrees cooler. When we slitch ahead and look at the map that charts out our tree cover, not surprisingly, where the tree cover is, is where you see those cooling effects, right? And so that, I just think, really underscores the importance of our programs, like Root for Trees, that help residents plant trees, and it's actually also available to businesses, which we've been talking more about with businesses, since a lot don't seem to know, and also the city's own tree planting efforts in rite of ways to increase that canopy. Of course, there are some areas where tree canopy is not going to wholly address the issue. If you look back on that Heat Island map, you know, you see a concentrated area in downtown. Some of our buildings, frankly, are just too tall to grow tree canopy over, and so when we looked at this data, one of the important takeaways for us was the importance of introducing support for white roofs or green roofs through our commercial activities, and that was rolled into then the TIF-funded projects that we're offering in downtown. It's a very cost-effective intervention. And then one of the other exciting projects we were able to launch in the last year was our Climate Resilience Corps. Through this program, we engaged with youth, in this particular instance, with youth at City High. We brought in trainers to talk about climate impacts in our area, but, and also how to engage with neighbors, because one of the things we know in following extreme weather event is that connections with your neighbors often make the difference in your safety and well-being. It was a really interesting project for those teens who went out and talked to their neighbors and heard about the impact of the derecho and the flooding and concerns their neighbors had. They went through a storytelling exercise to come up with their own definition of what it means to be resilient. They created a zine utilizing the things they had learned and things they had discussed, and they're actually, this week, packing kits to help increase home preparedness, that they'll then be going back out to their neighborhoods now that the weather's nice, and delivering. And they include things like a solar-powered phone charger, because one of the biggest things they heard from residents is that following the derecho, they had trouble charging their cell phones. Now, each of the homes contacted by the Climate Resilience Corps will have a solar-powered way of doing so in an emergency. And it's got Goldie on it, which I'll talk to you about in a minute, like now. So one of our other big successes, of course, is the launch of our Climate Action mascot. As you've probably taken away from this progress report, we have many, many irons in the fire, many things to talk about related to climate action. And one of the challenges is really helping people distinguish between what is a climate action and what isn't. So we had a marketing study. One of the recommendations from the marketing study was to make use of a mascot as a way to sort of, in many ways, it's a branding exercise to signal that this is a climate action, but also to make climate actions approachable and friendly. As you know, from the report you got on the Insulation Grant Program, when we applied Goldie to our outreach efforts to increase participation in the insulation program, participation went up 650%. So I often joke that Goldie also exists to keep me humble. Folks in the community do not want to hear about insulation from me, they want to hear about it from a cartoon bird, and that is fine. So in terms of looking ahead then, we've got several projects that are really exciting on the horizon. One that you're going to be hearing about in the weeks to come is a really great citizen science engagement project related to heat islands that we're super excited about in our department. We're also looking at better ways to engage our residents and businesses and organizations here in the community with opportunities under the Inflation Reduction Act. We actually have developed a checklist to help homeowners maximize their benefits. You know, one of the things we know from previous efforts in this area is that you can have the best funding in the world, but if people don't know about it, or don't know how to utilize it, it's not going to achieve the effects that you are desiring. And so we have some, done some very strategic thinking about how we can help homeowners increase those benefits to themselves while also helping us achieve some of our climate action goals under those programs. As you know, we're also pursuing a solar array, hopefully that'll be going up on the Public Works Building later this year, and we're looking toward a resilience hub pilot project. We've been working very closely with members of the Climate Action Commission on what exactly this program would look like. Resilience hubs are a little different from how we traditionally think of things like emergency shelters, in that they're really about engaging the community before a disaster happens, as well as during, providing some key services, and they're, they're really just fascinating, so I would say that's a really fun project to keep your eyes on in the months ahead. Phew. Now I'm going to take a drink of water, and I want to have you ask me some questions.
So thank you very much for that. Just wanted to flag, I see our UISG folks are here, and when we met with you guys before, one of the things we talked about was the, the program of the Door-to-Door, the Neighborhood Blitz program. So just want to make sure that, I know there were several members of your group who were very interested in that, so could you remind us what, what the date of that will be this year?
Yes, it's going to be April 22nd, and we'll have two volunteer shifts. One will happen in the morning to go out and deliver the kits, and one will happen in the afternoon to go back out and collect up those used light bulbs and batteries. So there's multiple opportunities depending on what your schedule allows.
Cool. More, they can access that online, or call your office, or what's the best way?
We do have a website set up for it, the easy, and we have a handy redirect. I believe it's icgov.org/energyblitz, and if that doesn't work, you can reach out to me directly, and I'll get that information in their hands.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I really want to emphasize how much I appreciate, you know, all the work that you guys have been doing since 2018, and really the thoughtful work that's gone into making sure that we have programming that really speaks to people. Apparently, a cartoon bird does that. Regardless, we got to get it done. I have a couple of questions for you, and this is, I really want to be clear about this, this is not to diminish any of the work that you guys have done. You're absolutely working on the things that are most changeable in the now, but I'm also thinking a little bit about further in the future, and really just want to pick your brain on a couple of things. I don't really know what the formal term for this stuff was called. I'm going to call it incidental emissions, emissions, so the kinds of emissions that occur as a result of, you know, pipeline breakage in homes or outside of homes, or, you know, the, the emissions that are created through the laying of concrete or the creation of concrete, industrial emissions, rather than just the energy used by sectors, the gas burned by sectors, the things that are, the emissions that are created as a result of processes. And so I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on the assessment of our carbon footprint in our community, because I glanced through the, the Climate Action Plan and the stuff that we're looking at here today, and a lot of it does seem to be. we're looking at here today, and a lot of it does seem to be, again rightly so, I don't, this is not a criticism at all, on the energy usage aspect of things. So I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about, you know, what we can do to assess where we are with those more incidental emissions in the future, when you think that that type of action needs to start? Yeah, just kind of a holistic picture.
Yeah, no, this is a wonderful question. We actually had a whole speaking of session focused specifically on greenhouse gas emission inventories for this reason. The greenhouse gas inventory that we focus on in this report and in most of our activities is our community-wide greenhouse gas inventory. We actually have three inventories that we do as a city. One is a municipal one that just looks specifically at city operations, and we have been doing those historically in about five-year intervals. That's the smallest scale, the things that are directly under control of City Hall. And one of the most interesting things we learned from that is really only about 5% of our emissions are directly under the control of City Hall, which is why things like Goldie are so critical, because for 95% of those emissions, we have to engage voluntary actions within the community. The next biggest one we have is the community-wide one, which is the one addressed in this report. We also did a, what's known as a consumption-based greenhouse gas inventory several years ago. Those are done less frequently, in part because they're very difficult to do. If you want to get into the technical terms, they really look at what you're talking about, which are scope-three emissions. The others look at scope-one and two. That's more technical than any of us need to drill down into. But one of the things we learned from the consumption-based inventory is that if everybody on the planet consumed at the rate that Iowa City does, we would need four planets to support that consumption. And that includes things like the emissions that come off of concrete, for example, in our building sector. So we are mindful of them, and we do have some programming, particularly in collaboration with the Resource Management Division, to look at how we can cut down on those consumption-based emissions. I will say it is the toughest nut to crack, like as much as I joke about getting people excited about insulation, getting them excited about buying fewer things online, and even a steeper mountain to climb, right? But it's a thoughtful question, and I thank you very much for it.
I had a question about the, that science project on Heat Island Effect.
Oh, yes, the citizen science one.
Talk a little bit more about that.
See, this is where I'm going to get myself into trouble. This is what I can say, and Danny, you flag me when I say too much. This is Daniel Bissell, our energy analyst, who was crucial in obtaining the grant that's going to support that activity. Part of the reason I can't go into too much detail about it is that part of our agreement with the federal agency sponsoring that project is they get to send out the press release first. But it is a very exciting project. It's going to directly engage residents here in Iowa City to help us get some ground-level data on the heat islands. The map that I showed you earlier is LiDAR data, which is taken aerially. So it's really great at capturing what's going on above the roof line in the city. The project that we'll be rolling out this summer through this grant will be getting street-level data just to give us a little more granularity. But also, I see it as just a, more importantly, an engagement activity where we can get folks with their own hands on the data, right? So it's not us telling you about the data. It's citizens actually involved and residents in gathering that data and then deciding how the city's going to use it. That's cool.
I like that aspect of it. I mean, one reason I brought it up was learning that in Portland, and this was a ground, kind of a ground-level analysis during a heat wave. So when you combine Heat Island Effect with a heat wave, the differences in temperature in Portland were 24 degrees, 99 degrees to 124 degrees. So when I heard that, I realized, I mean, that, that just as a story about Heat Island Effect was shocking to me. I mean, when you're talking about 124-degree temperatures, you're talking about potentially fatalities. And so, yeah, Heat Island Effect is a policy concept. I know I've been emphasizing it, but when I heard that, I realized this is, this is a really very serious issue.
Absolutely. You know, and one of the other things we talk about a lot is that climate change is an amplifier of existing vulnerabilities. So when we think about the folks who would be most affected by that Heat Island Effect, right, we're thinking about our unhoused population, we're thinking about folks who are perhaps transit-dependent, so they have to stand and wait for transportation. I think it's something that is very near and dear to our hearts and our programming. It's great to have such wonderful support for it.
Do you know?
Go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Sarah, thank you so much for this presentation, and I really want to commend you on the formatting and way in which information was presented in this report. Having the individual stories with real humans and their personal experiences is really impactful and persuasive, so thank you for that. And thank you to your whole team and for elevating the other city staff who are collaborating with you. So I had a couple of questions and then maybe ideas or, you know, again, not critical suggestions, but just ideas for maybe potential collaborations. You mentioned the marketing, or you mentioned the outreach to Realtors. Is there a comparable program or could there be with contractors and builders?
Actually, yes, we've been talking a lot about that as the next step.
Great, good. I mean, in my own experience, we replaced our furnace and our whole HVAC system in 2017, and it's natural gas. And I just, you know, if the person suggesting the installation could have raised that, that opportunity, we would have made a different choice. So I appreciate that a lot. And I think just for the, the marketing part and Goldie, I think that's really instructive for a lot of things that we do in the city. And I'm looking at Jeff, but he's hiding behind that monitor that, you know, there's a joke among people who do marketing and branding where they're like, well, marketing doesn't work on me. I know how it works. But marketing really does, does work, and it's really neat to see in a, in a division that already has, I think, a very high level of understanding of communication and what might be effective to kind of take it to that next level. So I hope that we can, you know, as you collaborate in other departments, like kind of pushing those same ideas in the way that you're doing outreach and even just having the door-to-door elements of what you're doing. I mean, you're really reaching people in the community, having the youth group, having the climate ambassadors. So yes, to all of those things, and I hope that they, you know, those, that can act as a template and a model for other activities of the city and letting people know what we're doing and what's available as well. On the collaboration front, just wondering if you or your staff are working with Better Together 2030 at all?
We haven't directly collaborated with them. We are aware of the plan that was outlined and have flagged areas that we think overlap with some of the climate activities. So there's some nice possibilities there.
Yeah, I think that would be really great. I just came from a meeting in the, for, I'm in the working group for the Transit and Connected Community pillar of that organization, and it's a regional effort, but certainly, you know, we were just talking about ways to help get folks to adopt e-bikes for transportation, you know? And it's like, oh, that, that's something we could talk with you about. So I think that Better Together connection might be fruitful quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the councilors have said, said how much we appreciate your office and all that you're doing. And also, we have the Climate Action Commission that is doing a lot of work on this front as well. My question actually is related to the construction collaboration or the collaboration with construction companies and such. But this is related to more of businesses that sell items like Menards, Lowe's, Alexander, unless their name has changed. Is there any collaboration on maybe educating their staff when they're selling materials to people? Because I think Councilor Berg has just said, you know, people might make a different choice if they were aware of, you know, someone say, what is more, you know, climate-friendly?
Yeah, no, that's a wonderful suggestion. It's not an area that we've, we've done much in to date, but that just means it's full of exciting possibilities.
Well, thanks for all that you've done so far. Yes.
And you all should know on the Goldie front that Jeff has volunteered to wear the costume if we ever develop that, so look forward to that.
Love it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Oh, any more questions from councilors?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion on that item? And now, I'm not exactly sure. So discussion on the utilization of ARPA, S L R F, dollars for climate and action report related projects?
Yeah, this is one that council requested to be on the agenda probably about two months ago, and we just felt, because of the topics that were being discussed in front of it, that it would be a good opportunity. So there's no staff presentation, it's just an opportunity for you to have that discussion. I will say, just when we were making our ARPA plans in 2021, the thought at that time, and this, you can access this on the memo on the first work session topic here, if you go to that summary page there, that would be in your 316 agenda under climate resiliency. Let's see. So it'd be page eight of that information packet. We labeled it climate resiliency and hazard assessment planning. And we had some early conversations with the Flood Center at the University of Iowa about doing some in-depth modeling on our infrastructure and just trying to forecast what climate change could, what impacts it could have on our infrastructure. So an example that everybody could relate to would be storm water systems, right? You've, you've had a number of projects before you in the last couple of years where we're going back into neighborhoods and increasing the size of our storm water infrastructure because we are experiencing heavier rains that are coming in quicker bursts than, than we have. So that was the thought process there. We haven't pursued that more. We certainly could, but we could also look at other ideas that you, that you have.
Has the climate, oh, I was just going to ask, is there any knowledge that the Climate Commission has made any recommendations? Yes.
Yes, I brought their sheet of recommendations with me.
Awesome.
So I sat down too soon. The Climate Action Commission actually took up a discussion of ARPA fund use back in July of 2021, and the recommendations they made, and this won't surprise you given the presentation you just saw, overwhelmingly focused on increasing our energy efficiency efforts. I would say that was prior to the launch of our energy efficiency grants, so that conversation probably is ripe for exploring again. We also had the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act, which includes some significant incentives toward energy efficiency. So I think they might respond differently, having that discussion now than they did more than two years ago. But they also do talk about things like scaling up our home rehabilitation program, increasing the energy efficiency offerings there, and in particular, applying it toward resilience planning. They suggested using it to fund grants for the resilience hubs that I briefly touched on. So those were their chief recommendations, but I know that this is an ongoing conversation. And I will say, I'm very happy to bring it to them again if you'd like renewed recommendations.
Thank you. The main reason I ask is because I know that our commissions, some of them are specializing in whatever umbrella they're, you know, kind of under. And so I don't know, at least for me, when I, you know, think about what are some of the projects that we can be working on, I personally would think that we would, you know, kind of give that over to our commission and our staff to kind of maybe make some recommendations before, you know, we start thinking about things, pulling them out of the sky.
I think one of the things that maybe I'll sort of piggyback on, sort of the, the questions and possibilities component, and maybe that the commission and your department could, could think through, is that Laura and I had talked, and she had actually brought it up, I think, several, a couple of years ago, in fact, about e-bikes. And at one point, the, our, you know, transportation department, they were absolutely locked and loaded and were going to do it, and then the contract fell through and then COVID. I discovered recently what Laura had been talking about with the possibility of an e-bike program and vouchers. And Denver has a really successful program. So I think that that's where, it's one idea and it's one specific idea, but I very much agree with you. I am not an expert, and I would love to see what an updated, you know, list of recommendations could be, but I would also maybe think that this could sort of be a, a nice stitching together of sort of the whole ecosystem, a whole community, and the possibility of how e-bikes might be able to work through climate action as well as helping with more accessible transportation. So it's a thought and idea, Laura, if you want to, because I know you pursued it a little bit more.
Well, I think just in the last couple of years, I just read an article yesterday that said that cargo e-bike adoption is the, like cargo e-bikes are selling better than any bikes have ever sold, and that the adoption of those is not by cyclists, it's by people who are using them for transportation. And as an e-bike rider who's not a cyclist but uses my bike for transportation, that resonated with me. And so that is what this working group also was talking about and just thinking of ways to package and incentivize with collaborations potentially, you know, through our several bike and e-bike retailers, as well as, we even were talking about working with lenders to try and package, you know, small loans that people could sort of see that car comparison and work through that, and also that the MPO has said 25% of people's budget or income is spent on transportation, and we know that people are really housing cost burdened, so if we shift some of that transportation's cost down. Those are the things that we were talking about in that working group. So that's why I see maybe collaboration, if it feeds into what the commission wants to talk about.
I can say this is something that our staff has been looking at, particularly in light of the success of the program in Denver. We took a close look at it. We looked at our Root for Trees program, which has been successful here, and thought about, is this something we could pattern on to that model where we offer a 50% voucher for the community and 80% if, if your income qualified? I will say, one of the pinch points we did run into very quickly was that even when you're subsidizing an e-bike, let's say you're paying 50% of it, these bikes can cost $2,000. And so that's still $1,000 that someone has to pay, which puts it out of reach for a number of residents. So then we started saying, well, what if we paid for the entire thing? What would that program look like? And how do you apply an equity lens to this effectively? And I think we do have some exciting possibilities there in terms of maybe, again, going back to our transit-dependent population and seeing if we could fund e-bikes for them, which might do a number of things, right? Increase the use of this electric transportation while also increasing transportation options for the folks receiving those vouchers. I will note, it would be a very expensive program, but, you know, sometimes the best work is. So I appreciate your thoughts on that.
I think there are also, and I'm not that familiar with this, I just had a conversation with someone who has an e-bike, and it was a kit that was installed on his conventional bike. So there may be, you know, less expensive options. I know I had brought this up during our strategic plan discussions, it didn't make the cut, but I do think, you know, the transportation piece, as we know with our buses, is a very visible expression of our climate action initiatives. You know, doing, doing work on building energy, you know, improving on energy efficiency in buildings doesn't really have a, other than through our own efforts to make it evident, doesn't have much presence. And so that's my sense of looking at transportation is it's, it's, it's important, I think it has potentially an equity component to it, and it would be, I think, a more visible indication that where we're going as a city.
Absolutely. I will say, I feel, I feel a little hesitant saying this, knowing your friend has one of the kits, but one of the difficulties we've seen with the aftermarket kits converting a conventional bike into an e-bike is that those are the e-bikes that have a tendency to catch on fire. So we're a little hesitant to embrace that particular technology, but I will say we discovered that through the very interesting conversations we've been having about forwarding e-bikes in the community. And at least one e-bike that we know we will be helping fund is a book bike for the library, which will be a cargo e-bike, which we looked at getting a kit for and then quickly decided to go in a different direction.
I think the possibility of e-bikes is, is amazing, and I, I see Councilor Burgess as the queen of e-bikes. See her on that, and she, no matter what the weather... as the queen of e-bikes. See her on that, and she, no matter what the weather, she's out there on her e-bike. And I think that's a wonderful thing, but as you said, it's expensive. But for some time now, over the years, we've talked about a bike share program, and I know several things have, like, fallen through on that. And that's kind of a less expensive bicycle option. But I don't know if Jeff or you know if we're any further on that, or if that's still going to maybe be a possibility for a less expensive means?
Yeah, we have taken a couple of runs at that, those, at least when we were investigating those in the past, we had not focused on e-bikes as much as just standard bikes. And then for a while, there are scooters were, were the predominant mode, being pushed out by the, by the bike sharing companies. We have not revisited that in probably a, a couple of years, mostly because the same staff that would manage that were managing all the transit improvements and continue to manage some of the transit improvements, including free fare and Sunday service and late night service. So they're just kind of taking those one by one. But we could reprioritize if council wants to see a bike share. There is a kind of a constant evolution within that industry. We've seen, you know, over 10 years or so since they've been prevalent, the industry changed quite a bit.
I do want to be clear in saying that any of the challenges we've identified, we don't think of those as deal breakers. We just think of those as things to think through as we develop a program like this, if that's a direction we want to go in.
I think one idea that I'm interested in exploring, you know, Councilor Harmson and I were at a meeting at a mobile home park a number of weeks ago. And there was a man who expressed that he was really interested in having solar on his unit. You know, for a lot of these people, they are, you know, constant, stable income, not, not increasing, I'm, I'm forgetting what the term for that is, but fixed income, pardon me, or, or otherwise income insecure. And, and I really like to explore the option for public financing or granting for different solar projects for low-income families. I think that would have, it would hold a lot of water for working towards, you know, our climate action, making sure that our, our low-income people who are interested in having, having solar panels, which also work to reduce their utility bills and affect their, their economic standing in the community. I think that's definitely something worth, at the very least, looking at. And I thank Rachel for sending me some information a few months ago about our specific programs that we have with insulation, which, again, you talked about today and is going very well.
Add on to that, on Facebook, every now and then you see these pop-ups about get solar and it to be, you know, virtually free. I don't know if you could speak to any of those, if it's, what, what your experience has been, or?
With Facebook ads?
One, he's asking if there's some programs out there.
We did have, we did have a program many of you might be familiar with. It was originally called Solarize Johnson County, then it became Grow Solar Johnson and Lynn, which sought to decrease the cost of putting solar energy onto homes. And I will say, we were able to put solar panels on a number of homes. I can't say that they were all necessarily low-income or moderate-income homes, but it was also really a valuable learning experience. We talk about solar as being a source of free energy because the energy comes from the sun, but you still have the equipment costs associated with it. And what turned out to be a pinch point for many folks going through that program, we have actually the specific data on how many attended an information session, how many got a consultation for their home, and how many adopted. And you could see it funneling down with each of those levels, right? And one of the big determining factors is that with solar energy, essentially, it's like a prepayment program for your energy needs, right? You make a large initial upfront investment, and then your energy usage goes down. Well, it doesn't really go down, but you get solar energy supplementing the energy you're getting off the grid. And so a lot of folks, when the proposition is, can you pay for the next 10 years of your electricity use in one check right now? That's a significant barrier, would be for me and for any number of people. And so finding a program that helps reduce that cost ends up being critical, not just for lower, moderate-income households, but really for households across the board. At the same time, you have the consideration of utility-scale solar. And I will say, whatever feelings may exist about utilities one way or the other, utility-scale energy is the cheapest form of energy that's available to any household generally, and that's because of the economies of scale, right? When they build a solar array that can feed into the grid and provide clean energy for all of us, it's just cheaper than what we would pay for a small array on our own homes. And so I think, as you saw with so many things in the progress report, the answer is really an all-of-the-above strategy rather than this or that. And certainly, we continue to explore those options and look for ways to do that. And I know, as many of you will know, we did put solar arrays on top of two of the houses that were in the South District neighborhood as a way to explore funding mechanisms for that. And we continue to look for those solutions and learning opportunities to advance these kinds of efforts.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to your specific comment about those ads, those are generally for different solar leasing or renting programs. Basically, a company will come in, they'll install a solar, a solar array on top of your house, but they will still own it. And you're still required to pay payments to that company, which can escalate over time, rather than actually being able to reap the benefits of being able to plug straight into the grid, get credits. All of that stuff is taken by the company. Same thing with all of the rebates that you would get for energy efficiency from the federal and state government, or any local rebates that we might have. Those are all taken by the company. So they put a $16,000 roughly investment onto a, a solar array, let's say. And over time, you know, 20, 30 years, you have to pay that back plus interest, and you get none of the benefits of actually owning independent, you know, home-based solar arrays, even though you have one. You might be paying less for your utility itself, but you still have to pay for the rental and leasing fees on those actual structures on top of your house. It's a predatory industry sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Not to, just to kind of switch topics just a little bit, something you brought up earlier in your presentation, and since we're talking about funding, and ARPA funding was the thing, talking about the zero fare bus stuff. So it's, it's kind of a question for whomever that can field that, is, is ARPA a funding mechanism we can use to launch such a program? I realize it's not as sustainable because it's, you know, it's not a renewable source, but should that be part of our conversations, as we consider that last part of our ARPA funding, or should that, should we be thinking about other streams?
Well, it's certainly an eligible use, and something we talked about in 2021 is helping us get over that hump. But the transit, transit services have received some direct funding as well through other sources from the federal government. So we feel like we probably don't need ARPA to launch. We've got some launch money within the, the ARPA transit streams. That more difficult question will be, how do we continue to sustain that funding once those launch dollars are, those, those initial dollars are used? But I don't think we need to probably tap into the state and local relief dollars that Cassie talked about earlier for, for fare free.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you.
So just to kind of put a bow on, on that discussion, we were intentionally, staff was intentionally kind of holding off on the climate piece of the ARPA, just to see how some of these bigger categories of, of funding played out. So you have the nonprofit capital grants, we have the underestimated business grants, and then our next bigger effort would be the affordable housing. We had $2.5 million slated for affordable housing. Just because 10%, 15% overage on any one of those categories could, could alter some of these smaller categories we were holding off, do you want us to, to move forward and either engage Climate Action Commission right now and ask for recommendations, or do you want us to stay the path and continue to work on some of the larger categories first? That's probably most critical for us to understand now.
Do we lose anything by asking them to start looking at recommendations?
No, I don't think you lose anything, but you might get into a situation, let's say, if the affordable housing opportunity that you really want to pursue is $3 million or $3.5 million, and we only have $2.5 million slotted for it, you may be in a situation where you have to go back to the commission, or whoever's generating recommendations for you and say, sorry, we're actually not going to do what you asked, we're going to pursue this other opportunity.
I think what I was hearing is that there are also opportunities that we haven't fully explored in the Inflation Reduction Act. Is that fair?
Well, the Inflation Reduction Act, such an interesting piece of legislation, covers 134 programs. And one of the things that we've been doing in our office is combing through and figuring out which ones are directly applicable to the city. The majority of them aren't. They're direct funding opportunities for federal programs. There is some funding potential under, well, a related piece of legislation, the ECGB funding, which the Climate Commission also took up and made a recommendation. There will be some future funding potentially available under the IRA. The difficulty is, there's still a lot of active rulemaking with it, and so we don't know exactly what all those programs look like, or what the participation requirements will be. So I feel like this is a rambling maybe. I think there are some opportunities. I don't know how big they are or what they'll be.
Yes, where I was going with that is that it seems that maybe just having the commission continuing in their work in prioritizing projects that may require bigger chunks of funding, even if we don't know if it's going to be this, you know, state and local relief bucket versus some other bucket or some other grant opportunity. I think just having that on the commission's radar is something that I think we want to hear about, is, is kind of what I'm thinking.
Just go to the commission and ask them to dream big. I like it.
I mean, I think that's kind of the moment we're in. People agree. I don't know.
I just have a quick follow-up question on something that Councilor Burgess, or one of your responses to Councilor Burgess's question. Just, again, not super important, but a question about the rulemaking. Is that something that is affected by divided Congress, or is that something that is happening through heads of executive departments?
No, it's really following the normal process for this kind of legislation where, you know, the money gets set aside, and you're all very familiar with this on the city level. The money gets set aside, says we want to allocate X number of dollars for this kind of programming, right? And then it falls to the staff members, in this case, the federal staff members, to say, all right, well, how do we make sure that it's applied equitably? And what are the kinds of reporting requirements we're going to put on it? And how do we administrate a program like this? And so that's all of the, what's happening right now with a number of those programs. And we expect to get increasing guidance throughout the course of this year. If you ask me this question again next year, I'll probably have an even more rambling, but more detailed answer.
Thank you. All right. So one of the questions is, do we want to direct the commission to kind of?
Wise is one with few desires.
I need this watch, this one. Horrible.
I guess one question I have is, is there a sense, you know, talking about like the other big piece, the affordable housing piece, is there a sense that we'll have a clearer direction on that at some time? Like, for instance, if there was a sense we'd have a clearer direction on that by summer, maybe we wait for that, and then in the middle of summer, then we kick it back to the Climate Commission and say, okay, we have a clearer idea of what your resources are going to be. What would, I mean, is there?
Well, I don't have that clear sense now. Part of, part of where we need to start is just a conversation with you and say, you know, here we have roughly $2.5 million set aside through these ARPA funds, but we also have Fee and Lou funds, collected in Riverfront Crossings, we have some TIF-generated affordable housing funds, and you have, one of the larger items in your strategic plan is a Think Big Affordable Housing project. So we need to engage with you and say, what does that look like? Is that a grant program that's rolled out? Is that a public housing program? Is that going to involve land acquisition? So I feel like we need to kind of start at ground level zero with, with a discussion with you to, to kind of tease out that strategic plan priority a little bit, and then we can build from there.
Well, I think part of the reason I ask that is because my consideration of not just the financial end of things, but also the time of the commission members, right? And I don't want to have them, you know, I don't want to, to spend that resource unwisely or without having a clear idea of what direction to give them. I don't know if that makes sense. But if we had like a better, I mean, I love that idea, right? I mean, these are people who have dedicated so much time and energy to it, and I want to make sure we honor the time and energy they dedicate to that work. So I'd hate to say, well, you know, dream big, and then, then have to go back and say, well, thanks, thanks for that, but we're going to have to have you start over. If we could maybe avoid that sort of duplication, and that's kind of my thought. So maybe, maybe the, the way forward is to start jumping into some of that affordable housing stuff, and some of that ground zero stuff. It's just my thought, like, for future, next few work sessions. I don't know, what does everybody else sort of think about that? But that's kind of what jumps out at me.
I think on the thing, just a reminder, for the, for the ARPA State and Local Relief Fund, we had only set aside $500,000 for climate action. That was our smallest category. So we, our, our budget with, with programs that we're doing now is roughly in that range. If you think of Root for Trees and the business grants and all the great things that Sarah just described, we're already operating at that level. So this would be kind of a one-time, I'm just generalizing here, doubling of those efforts, at least of the resources to support those efforts. So if we are going to ask to think big, we just have to make sure that we're thinking of the revenue sources that could support that, because you definitely don't want them to come back with five, six, seven million dollar projects and us to say, well, that's great, but we don't have any way to even contemplate funding those. So I would suggest one of two things. We either hold off, we let some things play out, that's the current path we're, we're on. Or if you're interested in, in getting a refresh of those ideas that the, that the commission gave us during July of '21, when we were gathering some input, I don't think that's harmful, as long as they, they know the general constraints. We're talking probably about a half million dollars. They've, they've done that recently with the Energy Efficiency Block Grant that we'll be getting. They've already kind of started to prioritize how we would use those funds. So I think it kind of builds naturally on some of those discussions.
I like the, what you had suggested, Sean, that I think that, given that, I think for all of us, it was almost unanimous in terms of looking at affordable housing in our strategic plan, it was the Think Big. And so I think that let's, let the plan help guide us in this conversation as well, especially given that while we're saying Think Big, it's almost with a small b, which is unfortunate. And so it is, it's about honoring time and commitment and energy, and, and making sure that we can follow through on the recommendations. And at the same time, if we are looking at a, a larger bucket of money for us to roll up our sleeves and start thinking about what that looks like in terms of affordable housing, because that's on us to do. So that's, I agree with you. Long story, long explanation.
I would say I agree, except I also think it's important for us to visually see within our, our ARPA fund dollars that we have some climate action outline things. And so even though if we want to kind of hold off on it, I think if it's going to end up being, I believe we should allocate some funds. And if it's $500,000 that we're going, that we're going to allocate, then I don't totally see the harm in asking the commission to go forth and just kind of base recommendations within $500,000.
Within that scale?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I like that it's sort of put a focus on our affordable housing efforts, that we, we do need to, to move along on those. But I, it does seem with a half a million dollar cap that having that discussion shouldn't be too time-consuming or a heavy, a heavy lift for the commission.
And the affordable housing is, that initiative is a 2.5 mil through the ARPA funds that we've kind of allocated or set aside.
I have a question, because I don't remember where we landed in discussing the possibility of a centralized grant person who could be out looking for money and that kind of thing.
It's, it's part of the FY24 budget recommendation. So as of July 1, we'd have the resources to hire that.
Was that one that we were talking about delaying, though, or no? I'm thinking of something else.
I, I kind of cautioned that we may need to revisit that, depending on property tax reform efforts at the state, but probably too soon to tell right now.
I just see that position maybe helping inform this kind of thing, because if we're asking the commission to think big, and then it's like, well, there's federal money out there that maybe could be directed towards something even larger, and we then suddenly have the capacity to look for it or go for it, that's a different conversation.
Yep. And I think our staff, Daniel's been tracking the IRA stuff really well, and continuing to look for opportunities and to collaborate with other departments. So we're doing that now, but we just don't have that sole position that's solely focused on that right now.
Thank you.
So what is the consensus? So what is the consensus?
I think what you said about, yes, ask them to relook at that, but making sure they understand the scope we're talking about is not the big scope. It's the, you know, half a million or-ish. Does that make sense? Because we don't really know. And we can tell them, we don't know what that's going to be, but it'll be in, right now, it looks like that range. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, and I see heads nodding, so that's what we're going to go with. Awesome. Anything else on this item? We're going to move on to item number four. Thank you so much for being a part of our discussion today. Item number four is determine city council representatives, one or two for the ARPA Underestimated Business Grant Program Review Committee.
So no staff presentation on this, just recognizing that at your last two work sessions, you've had two different proposals, one from the school district and one from the wage supplement, our wage enhancement team. Just thought you might want some space to discuss those work sessions. There's no urgency from staff standpoint.
You jumped ahead of us.
Oh, sorry. Jumped ahead.
No worries, but this is the ARPA Underestimated Business Grant Program Review Committee. So the last meeting, I know that I had, threw my hand up, and I wanted to be one of the representatives. And I guess at this time, it's, who else would like to be a representative? Anybody can. Okay. So are we thinking just one representative? Okay. All right, I will be the representative. We're on to item number five, which is the discussion on the Iowa City Community School District Preschool Funding Request and the Childcare Wage Enhancement Program.
Well, this is just kind of open discussion. I can give folks an update that I received today in this other committee meeting, but Katie Gerlock from Better Together was there and mentioned that yesterday and today there was, or yesterday there was a meeting of the childcare coalition and representatives from the school district about the questions that we had raised of collaboration and kind of being informed by providers in the possibility of scoping the four-year-old pre-K wraparound services that they were requesting funding for. So the takeaway that I got from that, as well as from our most recent work session relating to the wage enhancement and the questions of like, how do we pull this all together? What, you know, what information is needed to kind of make sure we're not, I don't know, maybe moving too hastily? The takeaway that I got is that, you know, the wage enhancement will help regardless, and the wraparound pre-K still has some pretty significant questions, and that maybe we continue, let the coalition continue to work on that with the district and try and shape that up. So that's at least where I am based on that update, but yeah, I don't know where other folks might be at.
That's good to hear. That was actually going to be my question, because I know it's one of the things we had talked about during our last work session, last two work sessions, about having different groups coming together and letting the solutions bubble up from the people that are, you know, in it up to their elbows, as opposed to us trying to figure it out from up here. And so that's great to hear. I think that would be, to me, that'd be great to hear sort of what more comes out of that. And I don't know if that's something for like, maybe, you know, looking at a couple of work sessions down the road to sort of get, again, kind of let those that are closest engaged be working on that, and then, you know, kind of let those solutions bubble up, and then we can take some action on it. Because it'd be great to take some positive action on this issue, and I know that we're all sort of excited about doing that. But make sure that what we're doing makes sense for, you know, creates solutions and not new problems.
I've had a couple of conversations as well, and actually was able to sort of productively go back to when we had COVID. I and a number of people in the community worked together to create these micro hubs called neighborhood nests. And to a certain extent, they were useful. It helped students who needed certain resources be able to do their learning in a way that was best for them. But what I remember most afterwards, because there were many debriefings about what worked, what didn't, and we did a lot of change on the fly, was about the number of assumptions that we had, that we thought surely this is going to be the right solution for the people who need it most. What we didn't do is actually talk to the people who needed it most. So I may sound a little blunt, but I'm, first of all, I'm incredibly glad that the childcare coalition and the school district are talking, because I think that there is boots-on-the-ground work and in input that the coalition that has access to childcare providers, to families who would be impacted across a range of different experiences. So this is really promising to me. I am not the type of person who says, you know, it has to be perfect. I recognize that's the enemy of the good. But I think, given the kind of investment and such promise that is in this program and such, frankly, necessity to help equip families and the community and these kiddos in their, to put their best foot forward, I would really like to see some answers and some solutioning done in advance of us doing an up or down vote. I would love, I know that when they were here and as well at joint entities, we were told that there were surveys, and we found out the number of kiddos that were not currently getting childcare. I would love to find out from those families, well, why is that? Right? And not as, I mean, as a genuine question, because there's a number of reasons why they may not. It might be that it's family-oriented. It might be that it's, you know, that there's a cultural gap between what does childcare mean as we're thinking of it versus how, you know, different families might understand it, and what are the educational components that are going into it? So these are questions that have kind of bubbled up, and is everything going to get answered? No, but I do think that these are things that, going back to my best of intentions and helping out the people that I thought needed the most help through NASTs, there were a lot of assumptions, and we would have done a lot better to reach out to the people who have boots on the ground and to the people who were directly impacted, to say, "Well, what is it that you need? And why aren't you getting it?" And so I would like the school district to pursue that line of thinking a little bit with a few more partners, and then I would feel that much more confident. This is a tremendous program, and I think it's, it has so much potential. I'm just not quite there yet in terms of feeling like it's got the buy-in and the, some of the, some of the data that it needs to, for me to feel as confident going forward, at least right now.
I would say just my own separate comment here. I still have a little bit of concern with the aspect that we would be prioritizing and starting the program with large childcare providers before...
I'm talking about the school district, not the wage enhancement.
I know. Since the item is for both, I'm not directly contrasting your comments. Apologies for not clarifying. So just on the general topic of the program, I am a little bit concerned, again, clarity, going to the wage enhancement program here is what my comments are about. A little bit concerned about the prioritizing of larger companies that have more resources and kind of just setting aside small families' operations, either out of homes or their own independent facilities. It's a concern. I don't know how to solve that problem. But again, I'm someone who has a little bit of a personal experience with this. My parents being in-home childcare providers for the bulk of my youth. Something like this is going to have a huge impact on those families, and some of those families are going to be having childcare facilities in their homes for very particular reasons. Maybe they can't leave their home. Maybe that's the extent of their abilities. I mean, we're going to be seeing certainly people that have, you know, questions about documentation, so we're looking at impacts to the immigrant community here and their streams of income. So I'd like to see something about that, either a better justification, in my opinion, as to why we would specifically exclude those people rather than work to bring them into the process and make sure that they can provide the documentation and other things that are necessary, rather than just, in my opinion, centralized public dollars in, you know, companies that already seem to be doing all right.
I'm pushing back a little bit, larger companies in terms of childcare?
Yeah. I'm just saying, like, more established. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I mean, because most childcare places are, I mean, A, there are many, many independent facilities, and B, we're talking about staff of 20.
Sure.
So I'm not sure, I was just like, I just want to clarify a little bit.
Absolutely. But what I'm comparing is, you know, my parents' operation was a staff of like three or four, right? And we took care of 20 or 30 kids with that. So I'm just wanting some more answers in that regard. You know, not necessarily saying that I would vote no, but it gets me a little bit uncomfortable. So just looking for more information in that regard. And again, nobody's making boatloads of money in the childcare business. I don't want it to be said like that, but I still want to make sure that when we are allocating these dollars, the allocations are equitable and encompassing the vast, you know, multitude of situations that we have with childcare providers in the community.
I appreciate your question, Councilor Dunn, because I believe I raised that question to the group that presented, as far as had they surveyed in-home care providers. And I'm talking just a mom-and-pop sort of organization that maybe has five or six children, and they hadn't yet, but it sounds like they had plans to try to seek these people out, because I know of some that they just can't, they can't afford to take children that the parents have childcare assistance. So, you know, those are concerns. But I agree that you don't want to pit them against these established businesses that even if they only have 20 employees, we would consider them the...
And not with large ones.
Right, so.
Just, I was saying for scale.
Right, exactly. Exactly. But I can understand your concern about that.
Twenty people of staff is what constitutes a large company. I just, I think for, I know the five people who are listening, you know, to talk about, you know, a large company of childcare, it's like, that's what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Not necessarily like, you know, 300 or anything.
Hundred percent.
But totally, your point taken is well taken.
And I appreciate your clarification, of course. Yeah, absolutely.
And I think what we heard at the last meeting was, you know, they had to start somewhere, and that I actually heard it as the wanting to get logistical things figured out and get the kinks ironed out, and then address those that are maybe going to have a few more, just, you know, challenges based exactly on the things that you were talking about. I mean, one thing, I know I have some clients who are childcare providers, is they don't have a wage, right? The way their business is structured is they pay themselves as sole proprietors or as distributions, you know, through an LLC or something like that. So it can't, it can't actually be delivered in the same way for all of those folks either. So I think that's what I heard at our last work session, but I think we'll just keep engaging them and make sure they know that that's a priority of ours as well.
And I certainly appreciate your comments, and I don't really think that there is a better course of action.
Okay.
Rather than to just let them know, hey, like, we don't want a large-scale transition away necessarily from these smaller, you know, operations, again, taking into account the scale of the operations. We want to make sure that people are treated equitably with this program. That's the biggest focus.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, here are no other comments. We'll go to clarification of agenda items.
You have to remind me, is this where we talk about if we want something pulled out from the consent?
Formal.
From formal, from formal? Yes. I actually would. It's on, I believe it's, sorry, once we get past the cigarette stuff. Yeah, the 7A on the rezoning of JJR Davis. That would be something that I would like to talk about during formal.
Just so we're clear, the item today is just setting the public hearing for next time. I'm sure, yeah, no, that's fine.
Thank you. These are why, this is why I pull it out and ask the question.
Yes.
That's what this is for.
Thank you. All right, never mind.
So then we'll talk about that on April 4 would be the public hearing.
Sounds good.
The clarification, I guess, on that item. Will the correspondence that we receive when this actually becomes a council vote issue in the preceding meetings, will the messages from Jane, Janet, and the rest of the Danes be included in packets future?
I'm looking at Kelly, because she is actually the guardian of such things.
Typically, no, because they are in this packet, and you'll accept them in this packet. And any new correspondence would be in when we hold the public hearing.
Would you like to see anything different?
I would like, at the very least, for Jane's, it's a four-page letter, to be included when we actually are doing our deliberations, if people would be okay with that.
I think if we accept one correspondence, we would do all.
And I think that was present, that was within the P&amp;Z Commission packet.
But it was also attached to this one.
It was attached.
Yeah, yeah. So if, I would say all correspondence.
Sure.
Are people okay with that?
Yes.
So if you can just make all correspondence. And that would include any late for this one as well?
Sure.
This is just for this one item?
Yes.
Just for this one item is the request. Anything else with this agenda? All right, we're going to move on to information packet, March 9. Information packet, March 16. And we went through a lot of that.
Well, just to start off on that, under pending work sessions, there were a couple I would like to ask council to consider for future work session. One would be the Orchard Subdistrict. When we had that on our formal agenda and had our vote, there was, you know, Jeff mentioned, you know, staff would be interested in council direction. So it seems that the first step toward trying to establish what that direction would be, would be to have a work session to discuss it.
Wasn't, Jeff, wasn't your sense of wanting direction, this is just purely because I don't know, based on the discussion and the vote for the Orchard Subdistrict, was it about looking back at the district plan, or was it about zoning?
Yeah, it could be either. That's one of the questions staff has.
So I guess that's what I'm curious, what you're looking at.
I'm envisioning it would be both.
Okay.
Larger conversation.
Yeah, is it a bigger, is the vision for the area flawed, or is our components of the zoning code flawed that need to be changed? That's kind of the question.
I would be okay with that. Do I have a work session on that?
I have no strong opinion on timing, but I do think we do need to give city staff a clearer direction, you know, definitely.
Agreed.
You know, we had to vote a while back. I mean, I personally would like to see, you know, it doesn't have to be immediately, but certainly some, put it on the radar that it's important that we have it. And then the second one was, has to do with the Rochester Avenue natural area. That's something that, you know, a few of us have been working on since August of last year. And I would like to have a discussion of the full council over that one. So I just wanted to raise that as another potential work session item.
I'm not sure I know what that is. What's the Rochester Avenue natural area?
Well, the Rochester Reconstruction Project.
Okay.
Entails a, an area with a, you know, it's a natural area along the south side of Rochester Street.
Where we didn't put the sidewalk, where we changed the plan to not...
Right, it's sort of, yes, on the south side of the street, a little bit east of Rochester Court, I think it is. If I'm not mistaken, you know, east, and I don't recall the actual linear footage. And it's been, you know, there's some concerns among the neighbors as to what was being proposed there. And, you know, three councilors over the last numerous months have, you know, been engaging with staff and the neighbors to try to understand... engaging with staff and the neighbors to try to understand what, if anything, we could do in that area. In part, the concern was a retaining wall, a variable height, that was going to be going in there. And, you know, that, what can we do to try to reduce, you know, the height and scope of that wall? And so there was, again, it's been an ongoing conversation, and at this point, I just felt it was something that I would like to have the whole council to be part of.
Is that wall in the right-of-way? Is this on private property?
It's in the right-of-way.
It's in the right-of-way.
Okay.
It's not proposed, it's in the approved project.
Right. It's the engineered plan for the retaining wall in our right-of-way. I don't feel like that warrants our additional attention. I feel like we've kind of vetted that through and approved the plan. I trust our engineers. I think it's, it can continue forward.
So, yeah, I think on this, so the question is, is there, you know, council support for the work session? And so I heard Counselor Teller say yes. I would personally like to have more discussions outside before bringing it to council, with Counselor Thomas personally. But if there is another third person, all right, so we'll put it on the work session agenda for the future, and we'll go from there.
Is this going to potentially hold up? I mean, because I know that construction is happening essentially now. Isn't that going to hold up?
We can certainly put it on the next agenda, on our next work session.
To what end? I mean, what are we going to be talking about?
Well, we can't discuss that here, what we're, I mean, it is a work session agenda item that has been put on the agenda, on the work session agenda. And so to be, you know, we have to prioritize things based on a lot of factors. And so maybe, you're wondering, what is the content so that you can figure out how to respond?
Correct.
Yep. So what I might suggest is maybe connect it with the person who recommended this work session item, to have a conversation with you. But we're going to move on to the next item. Anything else with March 16?
I mean, I think that we should definitely call out the memo from Director Parks and Rec, since we have the consultant selection process out there. You know, and I appreciated that, given that this has a lot of public interest, I appreciated that this was put forward with a lot of detail. I also have been reading emails from concerned citizens about the process, and I think that, having read the letter, and I apologize because I cannot remember your last name or how to pronounce it, but Amy, who is a staunch advocate of the City Park Pool, I read your letter, I read it through thoroughly, and I read it sort of side by side, along with what the proposal is. And I feel that many of your concerns are addressed within this memo and also the consultant process, including and especially the fact that whomever wins this will have a BSME in engineering as well as in development and design. So I just wanted to call that out, because I know that you're not the only one. There is an advocacy group who is really, really interested and does not want us to forget, and we have not. And we said when we approved the master plan, that there would be follow-ups and a very transparent process. And I just want to say that this is one very big step in that. It's multiple pages of step-by-step of here's what we're going to look at, here's how this is going to happen, here's how we'll get feedback. And just one point is that there was a question about, well, why would we look for input from people who don't use the pool? And it's actually precisely to make sure that we are more inclusive, because there are, we have found from the last process, that there are people who don't feel that the pool is currently set up for them, whether it's through ADA accommodations, or from it being accessible to them out of comfort and/or the types of things that they want to see. So I just wanted to answer that particular question. I don't know if you're listening. I will be responding in email, but I just think, kudos to staff and to everyone who put this memo together and the process itself. It's very detailed, it's intricate, but it's also very clear. I appreciate that.
Jeff, quick question about this one. When will we be tasked with approving this RFQ?
Well, typically, this is very rare that we come to you with an RFQ or an RFP, that's typically a staff function, and that you would approve the hiring of the consultant. So what you see here is basically our advertising to the consulting world to say, if you're interested in this project, that we'd like to provide these services, here's how we anticipate this going. And then Eric's office will work with Parks and Rec and engineering to actually develop an agreement with the selected consultant that you would consider in a public session. Three, four months would probably be ideal, when that would come back to you.
So I guess I would echo a lot of the comments that Counselor Alter had, but I've also had a number of meetings with the folks that are advocating for the pools. And I think that there's a pretty, and I, and tell me if I'm wrong, advocates for the pools, friends of RAL and friends of City Park Pool, I think that what they're asking for at this point is two things. One, for the original design of City Park Pool to be included as part of the focus group, which as of present, I don't believe it is. And two, for city, so basically no change be an option for the focus group. And two, for employees of the city or their family members to be excluded from the focus groups. I think at the very least, including the no design change in the focus group, is a pretty reasonable request, especially given how many people have been engaged on this topic. They have a petition of 900 people. That's no small feat. And I don't think it's particularly a difficult change either. So I would personally be in favor of making sure that we have those changes if council would feel interested.
I would have to be reminded on this, and I can totally see where you are on the no design change, but there has to be some changes, right? Because it's not ADA compliant, because the pool is 70 years old, right?
Yes, of course. Taking that into account.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, absolutely, taking that into account.
There has to be a zero entry, which does...
Yes. You know, complying with federal regulations, state regulations, all of that, but otherwise making that part of the focus group process, and then excluding, you know, anyone who works for the city or their family members from being part of that focus group, so that we're just focusing on that. That, I think, is part of a discussion, because I think there might be reasons for that. Would love to hear.
So I don't know if our attorney has anything to say about that, but I would, well, I'll let you respond to that, I'll give my two cents.
Well, yeah, I'm hesitant about the excluding all city employees. When I was reading, and I have not read all of the communications that we've received from the advocates for the two pools and so forth, I understood their criticism to be that the city staff was overweighted in the focus groups and so forth, and thus felt like the results were skewed. I presumed with the notion that all city staff would be of one mind, and I, for one, am not certain that that's accurate. So I think that taking the additional step to say not only that we will ensure that city staff is not overrepresented, but that we have no city staff involved, might be going pretty far.
Is there a comfortable middle ground that people would feel good about?
I, so I just wanted to clarify, because the way that I read the RFP, the focus groups are only if we decide that the pool needs to be redesigned. And that's why the focus groups are about redesign. So if we say, if we want the pool to remain the same, that's the repair option, and we don't get to the focus group stage unless and until we've already decided we're not going to stick with the current pool. So I just think procedurally, that is taken care of in how the steps are in order.
Well, the way I read this, and Amy's comments to us recently, is there, yes, there is, first, the idea of can the existing pool be repaired? And if it can be, and the council agrees to take that approach, that sort of stops the sequence. Amy was also talking to the thought that, let's say it can't be repaired. You know, what she was suggesting was, one of the three schematic designs would be essentially leaving the pool as is. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that's what Andrew was referring to. And I do think that makes sense. But I think it's important for me, at least for me, to explain what I'm thinking when I say that. Because, you know, the way I had put it, that it shall include one scheme that essentially preserves the existing pool footprint. I think, I think we all, I certainly would not want to say it has to be precisely the same footprint of what is there. Second of all, I would say, you know, preserving the existing pool footprint as a foundation for the consideration of additional features. Because in my view, I'm sure there are pools of that type that, over the years, have seen additional features included in the project. So, you know, at least that's my position, is I think it's important to have the footprint of the pool be one of the schematic design options. But I'm not viewing that as something where we just simply do no changes whatsoever, you know, with regard to the, any special features that could be included.
We'll have to wait and see what the, whoever wins the thing to find out.
What? I mean, I do think that's, that seems like a, especially given the history on this project, where there is a lot of interest, and just keep it the way it is. And that that's one of the options, not the only option, but it would be one of the options to be considered.
So if we decide not to repair the pool, but to renovate, couldn't the consultants come back within the parameters that are in the RFP? Couldn't one of the designs be to keep it as it is, but still replaced? Like, that's not excluded.
It's not excluded.
No, I think it's just to be clear upfront.
That one of them should be.
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable dictating to experts who we're hiring to come in and consider all of the other factors, right? I absolutely agree, there's been a lot of interest expressed to us in, you know, that it should remain this way. I think their job will be to take that into account in, you know, the work that we've done so far, and how that's been expressed and everything that's, you know, collected and the feedback and all of that that we have. And if that, along with every other factor about the pool that, at that point, we've already decided needs to be renovated, if that makes sense, that will be an option. I mean, that's kind of what I, I feel uncomfortable limiting what a consultant could come back with in that particular way, just because I think that's their job.
Well, it's not limiting them, it's just saying of the alternatives, there would be one alternative that essentially used the existing footprint of the pool as a starting point.
Well, and I think I hear what Counselor Burgess is saying is, anybody we hire is going to be privy to all of these discussions, and they couldn't possibly ignore the fact that there's been an ongoing, coming up with some of these design plans. So I think, and then please correct me if I'm putting the wrong words in your mouth, this is a self-solving problem, self-correcting, in that if it makes sense, that'll be there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess also what I'm worried about is if there are, you know, we're looking for an expert to tell us how this pool could be renovated. It can't be repaired, it has to be renovated. We're asking them to give us three designs of how that could be. If we say it has to, you know, one of those redesigns has to be this way, are we eliminating or are we cutting ourselves short from opportunities? Like, you know, if we're paying them for like their expertise, and we say, you know, one of the three has to be this, it just seems like we might be foreclosing. Whereas if, if the, you know, at that point, the focus groups will absolutely include, you know, the input that we've been hearing as well, right? Because the focus groups only happen at that point. I don't know, I just, it makes me uncomfortable to say that...
And there are some details in here, I know that we have to end, but I know that there are details that say things, like keep the mature trees, and, you know, that there's like working constraints that actually are talking about keeping that essential, some of it, that essential.
So we will take a recess from the work session and come back to this, but before we do that, I want to bring up USG on item number eight for their update.
And Mayor, while they're coming up, let me just supplement the record. Amy Kretkowski, there's been a number of comments about Amy, I just want to make sure the record reflects who we're talking about.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Council, I hope you're all having a good day. So just have a couple announcements here. First off, spring break just ended, so students are back and finishing up the last half of the semester. And the undergraduate student government is currently in its election phase, and we plan to know the next year's administration early April.
Yeah, and so in some lighter news, obviously, I wanted to throw in this before the next one. Men's basketball team didn't pass the first round of playoffs, but the women's team has made it to the Sweet 16, so we were cheering them on. Exactly. And then lesser news, not lesser news, not as happy news, the current Iowa legislature has passed a ban of university funds to DI initiatives and creating new ones. And so the Board of Regents has recently started reviewing current DI programs. We're currently working on how USG is going to tackle this, and so we'll give you updates as that goes on.
To add on, it hasn't been passed yet. It's in the, yeah, it's currently in the face.
It hasn't been passed, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to recess until after our formal meeting. We are back to our work session agenda. We were, we left off on Information Packet, March 16. And so we'll continue whatever discussions the council wants to.
Well, if I could just reframe things real quick, what you're looking at with the RFQ is the consultant selection document. So this is the advertisement, excuse me, that we put out seeking consultants to assist us. The scope of services, as we can best project right now, is outlined. That helps individual consultants determine whether this project would be a good fit. But ultimately, they will apply. And you have to think of this, some consultants may be full service, they may have architects, engineers within the same entity. Oftentimes, we'll get teams of consultants that will apply. With a lead consultant, in this case, I would expect an architect probably to be a lead consultant, but they might have a engineering firm to assist them, or an aquatic specialty firm to assist them. So again, this is just the advertisement to the consulting world. Eventually, staff will make a selection and bring that to you, and that'll go through the city attorney's office, and the exact scope of services will be outlined in that consultant agreement at that time.
Well, we were, at least as I recall, we were, we'd left off on the question of the, because it fell under number six on the scope of services regarding the schematic design. You know, whether to include the existing condition as a, as one of those options, or alternatives, I guess you might say. And, you know, as I was, as I was expressing when we were talking about it earlier tonight, I do think it, particularly given the history of the discussion on this, to include the existing footprint of the pool as one of those schematic design options. And as I also tried to emphasize, in my view, that's kind of a foundation for a schematic plan, meaning there could be modifications, additional features perhaps, that could be considered for that option. But it would start with the notion that the existing footprint would be the, essentially the existing footprint would be the foundation for any other considerations that might apply.
Jeff, I've got a quick question for you. Do you know or have any sort of idea about what kind of increase in cost to us and the taxpayers it would be to request for schematics? One, including basically leaving this as it is now, and then also saying... One, including basically leaving this as it is now, and then also saying, one, that is, you know, very much influenced off the current plan of the pool, any additions, anything that we need to do additional to that? I know that's a really hard thing to say.
Hard to say, I can give you an educated guess, but that's just what it is, is an educated guess, five to $10,000?
I personally think that's worth it.
It's what?
I think it's worth it. Because we, we have had tremendous engagement over this process, and if we get to the point where we're already deciding that we're going to be rebuilding the pool entirely, I think that that design should be required to be part of the process, and required to be part of the focus group. We're not saying that, you know, come the focus, say the focus group chooses resoundingly a different proposal, you know, that speaks for itself. So we're not requiring or tying our own hands in picking that design, but I really want to see what people have to say. In addition, if we were to design it and go against the current design or change it drastically, that goes directly against the resolution that was passed by the Historic Preservation Commission, which does kind of concern me in a way. So, $5,000 to just add it, to drop in the bucket for the whole project.
I'd like to just, I'd like to add just a couple of things, because I want to, this is uncharted territory for the council to be weighing in on the RFP, sorry, in the RFQ, and we brought it to you for this reason, so you could have this debate, but as, as you read it right now, it sounds like a, a scope that's written in stone, that we're going to go through these focus groups, we're going to develop these schematic designs, we're going to do this statistically valid survey. Sometimes staff will learn things through these consultant processes, right? We might go through six or seven presentations from consultants that have designed and built dozens and dozens of these pools across the country, and they might suggest modifications to this. So I just want to caution you on getting too focused on this, you know, the, the exact type of, of focus groups, or the sequencing of focus groups and the, and the survey. Staff is expressing our intent to the consulting world, but again, I think we, I think it's in everybody's best interest to be, to remain flexible. Now, I don't have a concern, if you, if you want to add another schematic design and, and work within that footprint, that's, that's great feedback, we'll, we can incorporate that. But I'm, you know, when you, when you talk about the focus groups needing to weigh in on specific designs, that's not, that's not exactly how we've laid it out here, it could end up that way. But we could also have a consultant that says, hey, we, we've, you know, done this amazing digital and social media engagement campaign on, on other pools, it's been really successful. But we didn't call for that here, but we might decide through that process that, yeah, that, that will fit here. So, for the public, for, for the council, because we don't do this very often, I just want to kind of let you know how staff views these, as being somewhat flexible. But when it comes to developing schematic designs, if you want one that very closely resembles the, the existing, we can incorporate that into that. The question would be, do you want that as one as the three, or do you want to move to four, or an additional?
Before we get to that, I wanted to just follow up with a question, Jeff, that it sounds to me also that this is a process that these potentially the, those who are applying for it, they're also very familiar with this process, and so they too, they're looking at this, this is essentially for them to understand parameters and what work has been done, to see do they have the interest, but understanding that, yeah, they might say, we've got expertise that you didn't call out here, or we have, that there's flexibility on both sides, that they're, they are, your interest, you're signaling as a city, this is what we've done, this is what we're interested in, but there's a sense from, if we're going to work together, that yes, you may have some additional things, that there's flexibility on both sides. Does that seem to capture it? So it's, it's just a good caveat for all of us who are new to it, to know that this is not just in lockstep.
Yeah, you'll see that, you'll see the exact process laid out when you approve the consultant agreement. You're seeing what staff is envisioning that process to be, but we remain open in a project like this, in case somebody has some valuable experience that they bring to the table and suggest slight modifications. You're not going to see anything drastically different, but you might see some slight modifications.
I guess my concern here is that, you know, potential developer or drafter is not going to go through, you know, how long has this process been in, in order, months, a year, multiple years' worth of public meetings and documents to understand the kind of public response that we've had in regard to this? So, you know, at the very least, again, for me personally, the decision is up to council, I think that we should have some either guidance or explanation as to what public comment has been received for this, regarding to the floor plan, so that they, when we hand them this document, when they read this thing, they're understanding that there is strong public support, you know, in a manner of speaking, for the current design, rather than necessarily setting one requirement, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'd push back a little bit. We would expect that a consultant that proposes to us has done their homework and understands that. And even, we have a section of additional resources, which will include city council minutes and things like that. Staff would absolutely expect that a consultant wouldn't come into this process with, blind to those community discussions. So, yeah, that's something we try to tease out in that process.
I think it's important, too, to, I certainly would not be in favor of substituting one of the three designs with something that we are foisting upon, not foisting upon, but, but giving maybe a weight to, to a design. We're really, we're at the stage of the process where we want to, if we're going to spend money to hire somebody to come in with some, some ideas, and we think that they've got some expertise, you know, I feel like we're not getting the city's bang for the buck if we say, just give us two designs, plus, you know, go out there and copy and paste from what's already there. And also, one, I also worry a little bit if we say, well, we want to make sure and include this design, if we're not signaling that, hey, that's probably the one we're going to pick, so don't put your full effort into these, time and effort into these other three, because we're probably not going to pick them anyway. It just feels like, you know, and they're going to have the public input, and, and be able to, and come up with, you know, another round of public input that's going to lay into this, and I, I can't imagine that any of the people who are advocating for anything are going to just suddenly stop, you know, willing to bet that, exactly. So, so I mean, I think some of these things will be self-solving, that maybe we don't need to, to issue an edict from the council on, on these exact parameters. That's just kind of, maybe we're, maybe the problem doesn't exist as we think, or that has been framed, because, I mean, this is what the process will reveal. I mean, we have advocates who are going to advocate for, advocate for various different things, and, and are going to be a part of this process, and that's actually what, when we were discussing this last summer, one of the things we had said during our many discussions was, please keep advocating, please keep engaged with the process, and, and, you know, and as the design, as we got to a design phase, because we weren't at a design phase last summer, so.
Yeah, I would just simply say that, you know, this is under scope of services, so if, it, it does affect the number of alternatives as we're talking about, and so I think, and I, I certainly support the idea of having four, if we want to maintain having three other than the existing. And, you know, Jeff gave a, sort of a ballpark notion of what that might cost, it's a really pretty nominal cost. But I think it's just, sort of provides, for clarity, you know, where we're starting with the scope. I would also mention another item on this, and again, maybe this is, I don't know if I, we need to change the, the language in this, but I am concerned with the, where the public participation, at least in terms of a kind of an in-person public meeting, begins. And it seems to me, and this in part is, is based on my own, you know, professional experience, working on, on public recreational facilities. And that is that at the beginning of the project, having an opportunity for the community to meet as a general public, rather than breaking down into the, the focus groups, I think would be a useful element, in that it would, first of all, provide an opportunity for those who are participating in the focus groups to hear from other focus group members, or just different points of view on the question of the City Park Pool. I understand the, you know, the, the notion of focus groups, but I think it's important to also try to provide a forum in which people can hear from one another, so that you, you do get multiple perspectives, and you can hear back, you know, you may be coming in as, say, the, the childcare provider, and you have your own particular understanding of the pool, and you hear from, you know, another, another pass holder with, who regularly attends as a family. And to try to, through this process, the, the community itself begins to better understand the, you know, the complexity and diversity of users who use City Park Pool. So you're not, you're not simply approaching this from within your own focus group, as, as we've defined it. And that's the way we would do our work in San Francisco, we would, we would have a series of meetings, actually. You know, at the very beginning, the city would then provide a kind of a preliminary concept based on what was heard, receive public comment, and then come back again, sort of with a final preliminary plan based on the comments received at the second meeting. I'm not suggesting that, but it does seem to me we would benefit from having, right at the beginning, an opportunity for the, the public to kind of weigh in without the constraint of, you know, being representative of a particular user group. So I'll just.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I think we've had the, we've had that process to get us to this point, when we were going through everything relating to, how did we determine that either the repair renovation of the City Park Pool would be a thing that we're now proceeding to this point? I mean, I know, we all heard a tremendous amount of input, and the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of that, that process to get to that being a part of the plan. And if you'll recall, there was that very preliminary kind of drawing, right, that sparked a whole lot of that input. So I feel pretty good about the level of input that we've gotten, based on that, that idea, right? What if, what if this was what City Park were to look like, generated a ton of feedback, and has informed us getting to this point here? I feel good that we have met that, and, you know, are now at the point where we can move forward with the idea of, okay, we have all of that input, which is not going away, both what existed and continued advocacy, and so next step, so that we can get to the point of actually having a project that's completed, whatever the scope of that, you know, we decide will be, can continue to move forward.
So, it seemed like there's a lot of discussion and different viewpoints on, you know, how do we move forward? I guess the question at hand is, are there going to be some edits in what we have in this document for the, for the, for the consults? As I see it, the, the number one thing under the scope of services is review of previous reports and public input. And then the, the fifth thing is, you know, these focus groups. And so, this is a, you know, a community of 74,000 people, and, you know, there'll be people coming to represent from their vantage point. I do like the focus groups to be separate, although I do understand your point as, you know, bringing people together to, to hear what other people think. You know, it, it does make a difference in, oh, I wasn't aware, you know, that this is important to you. But I think at this point, I feel comfortable with this moving forward. Again, the, the review of previous public input is going to happen, there'll be opportunities for continued input from people in the community, and that's, you know, kind of bullet number five. And then number six is where the development of these, you know, three designs come forth. And so, I feel comfortable at this level, starting here, and, but I do hear the concerns of those in the community. So, I don't know, if I was doing my accounts, because that's a part of my job, is to do the counts of what do I hear, and I think I heard, and I'll just say names, Hermson, Alter, Burgess, and myself say, at this point, let's move forward with what's here, and then with no edits, is what I think I heard. And maybe people can confirm that.
I confirm it to the, because I do think that, I mean, that's why I actually asked my follow-up question about the understanding from the, that this is not, again, it's not written in stone, as to this is the exact, like, thou shalt do this, it is recognizing the needs from the city, and as you say, it's a perfect winnowing experience, you know? If somebody comes in, is like, here, I'm just going to give you Wally World, right? Well, then they did not do their homework. And then likewise, I think that there, John, I think you raised some really interesting points about the focus groups and the way in which they could happen. I just don't think that in the scope of services, in this, essentially, as you said, an advertisement for qualified people to come in, that we need to be that granular at this moment. This is sort of, here's who we want to make sure we hear from, and here's a way in which we can understand it, because we are 74,000 people. However, there's wiggle room in there, too, right? There might be that we do an open house, we're, we're doing it for the underestimated businesses, maybe there's an open house for this. I don't know, but I don't know that we need to have that written here, because if we end up finding out that there's other, we can't account for everything in advance of finding out who we're going to work with. So this is why I'm okay with it as is, as well. And so I take your point as, as well, Sean, about wanting to see, all right, what's your game? How well can you absorb what this community wants with its myriad populations and desires? What is going, what's your best? And then the community can respond to that, and so that's where I'm at.
Unless there is any more comments, or change of majority at this point to change this document, I want to hear it now, or else we're going to move on to the next item.
Well, I would just say finally, that, you know, one, one takeaway I took from the master plan phase was the, there was the sense that the public wasn't heard. And so that's, that's one reason why, you know, I've suggested those two items. If we, if we do not improve on both the public feeling heard and the, you know, the question of what, whether to consider leaving the pool essentially as it is, whether it's repaired or replaced, we will hear that, you know, no doubt about it.
And we're going to hear it in step five.
And I, again, if we're talking scope, if we're talking scope, there is, there is a cost implication, it's not significant, but.
Yeah. It will be heard in, number one, review of previous reports and public input, and number five, through those focus groups. So it will be heard again.
Not to mention all of our meetings.
Yeah.
Which are public, and which, where we hear from people.
Yeah.
And the meetings that we'll continue to have, and the emails that we'll continue to receive, so.
And those voices are important, and I think, you know, it, it captures those voices to have opportunities in this document, so. All right, if nothing else on this item, anything else from the March 16th info packet? Here are nothing else, we are adjourned from our work session.